Get her every day now, huh?
Yeah.
June.
Yeah.
I want to honor the 38 membership.
Yes. We brought everybody. How you doing?
Here.
Nice to meet you.
This is your chair.
Oh.
Yeah.
I went one night. I fell asleep. I went to sleep. I miss that. I drove myself to all of them. So if I go, you can.
Well, it was just finally started. They had me, yeah, they basically wanted one of them.
Yes, I can see that.
So maybe. Where?
Park, that's right.
No, it's his house.
You have two houses in there. I met those guys. Can we talk about that? Can we talk about this house?
Yeah, most of these, yeah.
Very gentle.
He was really nice to me, you know. He was really, but he was part of the bar school, you know. But he's.
You look at hotels, you know.
But in a place, then all the stuff from the.
Uh, I gotta make a list.
Big enough.
That would be one. Supposedly you can fly to.
Yeah, so we have.
That's on my. Paying.
Flight number.
Sorry, man, you have to shut them down. Take that first flight.
You're going to Vegas.
Well, I think that, you know, living in my hands now. We have, you know.
Over the show. Always something to do with it. Trying to email right now. It's not working very well.
Yeah, that's the plan. If the insurance company decides to.
Stick to the Sheldon.
That will reconsider.
How are you? Hi. How are you? I haven't seen you in a while. It's been a long time. Are you still working?
Retired.
Oh, congratulations. I've retired. It's gone on six years.
Yeah, that's about when Jean left.
Yeah.
So what, what's.
Building on the name of school. He's just Lucille.
One Lucille, that's right.
Oh, you're here to talk. President, we're here to speak.
No, I'm with the legal women voters. We have an observer court. We go to council meetings. Library board meetings.
So you keep busy.
Yeah, yeah. Do you have plans?
Now it's the last.
No. Do you have plans? Good for you. That's fun, because it's relaxed.
Yeah. I think he's living Charlotte, so we can go whenever now.
Yeah. Sammy's in DC. We just got back from Minneapolis. That's where our oldest son is. And then Josh, the middle one, is down in Alabama.
Oh.
So we do a lot of driving.
Well.
Yeah, I'd rather drive than walk.
Yeah, that's. Just got a better driving vehicle.
Good. How many grandkids?
Six.
Oh, okay.
Each child has two.
Well, that looked out well, yeah.
And only, well, two kids live here. Sarah lives up in, uh, Carolina.
Yeah, I think she married the son of one of Tom's fraternity brothers.
Oh, yes.
Tommy Ness?
Yeah. Her girl's just turned fourteen.
No way.
A fourteen-year-old.
Wow.
Can't believe they'll be going.
Our oldest is seven, and that was.
Oh.
We're just starting.
Are they, you like?
No, they're all.
They're all alike.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
So we do a lot of FaceTime.
Yeah, yeah, that helps a lot.
Yeah, it does.
So it's not higher?
So your time, are you gonna work till?
My contract.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, till June?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely after.
But I put it in so they can hire someone.
Yeah.
They're probably not.
How many years did you do that job? Thirty. Wow, grows fast.
Yeah, it did, it did. I was having so much fun, I lost track of time.
It has been fun. That's good.
I want to stay here.
Yeah.
I don't know what we're, what we're doing. Yes, we're talking to a lawyer with regards to that. I'll find out.
Phone from work?
No. I, I don't know how to detail this stuff. Congratulations.
What's that? I was hoping their feeling returns. I did two of them for metal because they spent the same.
Well, I think this meeting forgot. Yeah, they could have done in about fifteen minutes. Fifteen.
Including retiring.
It'll go fast if that's.
Say much.
Okay, good. Now, in your case, maybe they will though. Who knows?
No, I don't know why I agree to. You know, I know these people.
Yeah.
Two boys over there.
Uh, Wood?
Yes.
Here. Sroya?
Yeah.
Darko?
Yeah.
Greenwald?
Okay, we have a need for executive session as recommended to the board of the attorney. Executive session to discuss pending or pending court action with public bodies of attorney. We have motion.
So, Wood?
Say it.
Full call.
Sroya?
Yes.
Sroya?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes. It should have taken long. Is that over here?
Yeah, we're not gonna stretch you this.
Do you want to?
Yeah.
Sorry, lady.
Yep.
Little man. What? I said, sorry, you can't read.
No. Well, I'll come to socialize, but I don't want to work. Too much, too much.
I don't have any refills.
I know. I'm gonna fix my line. Skinnery and the rest of them. Never been so happy to be a specialist.
Yeah.
Everyone teaches. Ten children yesterday.
Yeah, we all know that. She's boarding a flight. It's like, oh, yeah. Probably understand.
My kid's getting wet.
Sarah, you were listening to me. I think that I'm popular. Yeah. We should charge for this guy, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I did grow for them a lot.
There we go.
Absolutely. Quite a good job, actually. Well, please. I think those cuts you made about ten years ago. The more we'll be able to handle the better. Aren't you? Well, we're not bothering the side of the. We're. You are, you're team. Okay, Alex, there. Oh, okay. So we already have that story. You were here for that. Isn't that like your first? Yeah, yeah. Okay, so you were there. No, no, no. We're rehearsing that. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. They're at my building. So. That's why we're rehearsing it. So this was about. It's like the only thing that. I just want to. Yeah, we love that. We don't want it. We have two long hours. Yeah. They, they can't.
Oh, okay. So you're staying following?
I got it all. Okay. I'm a flavor. For sure. It's like, apart from you. Attorney on the job. It's like New York's.
Oh, shit.
So that's. Wow. Oh, that's true. That's all reasons to be in law. No cards, so there's some, but like that. So. They did.
I want to see.
No. That is very technical. Okay, good to see you. I both hired.
Right, well, no, somebody has to step up.
Your advice.
True. There's another way. Okay, yeah. See, that's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Something. Where we. Well, okay. Oh.
She has somebody. I mean, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. But. I don't know. Yeah. What kind of landlord?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a bad front.
That's.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah, right. But then you're doing more marketing.
I know. So.
It's hard, we're not like going over.
Came up for the. Maybe I'm a little bit. The more you're. She worked on it. She's got a trucking company. Yeah, she hired us a few years. It's your secretary. Well, we're the. Well, the kids, but, you know, but like, the kids, which, it's funny, because they're. So. But the kids, they're all. The kids are not. Trick or treat. It's okay. They didn't want to. She would grow back in a whole. Yeah, it's a. The second year.
I'm also gonna be.
I did a bad. Who's gonna take responsibility? Yeah. You don't have to give everything. It's great.
Oh, I shouldn't have done more. Just so much I don't have.
Yeah. Cause you're sitting there. More and more. Right. Killing it down. True. They take. I didn't decide. I can see that. Yeah. Yeah. You're not the station. Yeah.
You need. I know.
Yeah.
Rayleigh's working. Who's the first?
Yeah. At their hospital. Forget them.
It's kind of exciting.
Okay.
I know.
Okay. Did you ever run a summer? Well, it's high school. I feel like.
Funny, it's just.
Yeah. Girl. Yeah. Right. Like, her job was that. Or whether it was.
All the brains.
And like, four principles came out of her team. She's like, they don't work with me. This is like a bunch of people in a row. Yeah, right. Yeah, yeah. Sure. Yeah. Yeah.
Right when you want to. Oh, no, it's. It's like, I don't think. With our homeless.
That's something. Like. I'm pushing back up. I, I wouldn't. This room was a problem. I have. They, I'm not kidding. Your taxes you hear about. And it's working on. Sometimes you can like, you know, one million is okay. And then it's like.
No. Some water with the.
Sure.
There water? I have. Okay, we are back in executive session. They have a presentation, I understand.
We need to adopt the agenda first.
Oh, I'm sorry. There were recommendations to adopt the agenda.
So, Susan?
Sroya?
Yes.
Darko?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes. Now.
Thank you, Dr. Roden. Yes, we have our family support specialists with us this evening, and they work with our building care teams. Our building care teams have been very active in the district now for about, I think, seven, six or seven years now. So we started with one family support specialist about five years ago, and we now have three. They're three very busy individuals and do a lot for our students and families. So Rachel Shaneauer is our family support specialist that works with our preschool through fifth grade students in buildings. So I'm gonna turn it over to Rachel. She's gonna start, and then I know that she'll introduce the next two as they all three of them speak.
Thank you for having me here tonight. So, yes, I'm one of the family support specialists, working with care teams. Care team is a county-run, county-wide run program through the Star County Educational Service Center. It is a comprehensive and holistic type of system of support for our students here in the district. It typically consists of us, the family support specialists, school and mental health counselors, administrators, as well as sometimes teachers, nurses, SROs, intervention specialists, school psychologists, or other staff members on our care teams. Currently, our care teams are serving two hundred and twenty-seven students in our district. From preschool to fifth grade, that is eighty-eight students. At our North Canton Middle School, that is fifty-eight students, and at Cooper High School, there are eighty-one students currently being served by a care team. Each care team needs regularly to develop strategies and align resources to promote physical, social, emotional, and intellectual support for all students to be successful, and we really want to do that here in North Canton as well as you do. Next, I'm going to introduce Kathy Yaros. She is our family support specialist here at Cooper High School.
Hi, thank you for having us again. So I wanted to just tell you sort of what our role as family support specialists are. And in a nutshell, we address non-academic barriers to support, to education. So a child can't come to school ready to learn if he's worried about poverty, or where he's gonna live, or if there's just something going on in their life. Not all of our students are in financial, economic crisis. Sometimes it's something that happens. We had at least three fires this year within our district, and we tried to help those families get whatever resources and support they need outside of the school. So we work really closely with counselors and administrators and fill in wherever that needs to be. Working directly with students, I probably do that a little bit more because the students are older in the high school. I work with the counselors to help them with resources such as volunteerism and connections in the community outside of the regular stuff that we would do. So just to keep it short, we also help in crises. We often work very, very closely, the three of us, because we share so many families, and we offer ongoing support. So even as we get through something like the holidays, we're still calling and checking in with them, helping with the truancy issues if that's what the need is, whatever. In general, talk about our next part, some of the things that we're doing.
Hi, I'm Jen Holloway. I'm at the middle school. And one thing that we do and love to do is help with holidays. And this year, we served one hundred and fifteen families with about two hundred and twenty-nine children with holiday help. And that, we have a huge community that loves to help. We had nine businesses, nine private donors, and seven churches help us support all of those families. And every school helped in some fashion, whether it was buying gifts, supporting us with Jingle for Jeans, giving money. We were able to help lots of families with a loving Christmas and Thanksgiving, we can wrap that up too. And one thing we're looking forward to in the future here is we're doing summer totes, and we love to help our families have a fun summer. Whether that's going outside and playing bubbles, sidewalk chalk, older kids like to go get ice cream. And sometimes we forget that some of our students don't have the opportunity to go outside and play, to go to Dogwood Pool, to go to Pabst to get ice cream. I mean, you know, who doesn't want that? So we try to have this great tote so they can have a fun summer, and we also provide resource, a resource list, because things happen in the summer when school is out. And we have this locally issued paper that I can give to you as well that has emergency content, if they need help with food, clothing, support groups, health services, that kind of thing. Every family gets one of these so they can connect through the summer if they need help.
This school year resulted, we've also been working with a grandparent caregiver. We are seeing an increase in different grandparents who are the primary caregivers or are, or have custody of their grandchildren. As we've seen that increase, we talked to this grandparent, and she, as well as us, wanted to start a support group for grandparent caregivers. So we were able to start that this school year. Right now, we have a very solid daytime group, and we are trying to get an evening group up and running as well. We're seeing a lot of benefit to that, especially because many of those families are on a fixed income, or this was something that came unexpectedly, and they really just need, whether it be financial support, it can also be emotional support. That can come from us, but really, we want to be there as a resource for the group, but for it to become their own group, to be there with each other, but we've got to be a part of that.
All right. I'm all about community. Most of you know me. Very proud to be back in the North Canton community and connecting those resources without our own. One of our administrators over at ESE said, North Canton has the resources and heart to take care of their own, and we have done that to be a thousand percent true. And we have done that to be 1,000% true. We were absolutely blown away by the responses from the community, not only at the holidays, but any other time that we put out on our social media that there are specific or general needs, the contributions given at the library through the YMCA. We were actually there for the reboot of the North Canton Ministerial Association. We're having conversations about housing and poverty in North Canton, meeting with whoever wants to know our take on it. Of course, our focus is always on our students and the kiddos that we serve and how we can better serve those children. So we do way more than food pantries and those resources. Jen, you want to wrap it up?
So one of our biggest challenges this year is mental health. I know a lot of people may be familiar with the crisis we are experiencing right now with mental health, getting access to it. I was sat in a meeting today with a parent who was frustrated trying to find help for their son. And between the lack of counselors, between waiting lists, it's hard. Insurance issues, it's really hard and challenging. And we, as family support specialists, just try to encourage them to keep calling, to keep pursuing, you know, mental health services so that their children can get the help and support that they need. Another thing that we faced a lot in the last two months is housing issues, evictions. And families are here for a reason and that is because our school is awesome and supports every children, all children, no matter what is the economic status. And so they want to stay here and they struggle to stay here in some realms. And so we have supported three families recently finding resources to have them stay here in our wonderful community.
The kids lose about six months of education every time they vote, according to the data that we have. And we really care so much about those kids and we don't want to see that happen. We have one young man that gave care, he's homeless right now, living in North Canton. And he came in very angry and a lot of issues coming in. We see him in the halls smiling now. I have developed a relationship with his mom. We're getting him services with the DD and other agencies that he needs. These are, these are some of our success stories. We have so many, there's so many that we're working to become success stories. But every time I see this one in the halls and he's like, "You're the lady that got me that shirt." It's just, it just does our hearts so much good. And we all have those kids in our schools. So do you have any questions for us?
The, you have a Facebook page. We can all get attached to. We're all not particular social media, so I appreciate that. Any other ways we should, we could get involved or send that off to information or needs of help?
Oh, one group that we also are affiliated with is the North Canton Cares Network. And that's where we're directly working with the different North Canton entities, government, some of the agencies in town and so forth. They also have Facebook page, not Facebook or Zach, former FSS. That's one way shares us about newsletters. If you want to help, there's so many ways you can help. Just ask, we'd be happy to help you.
I apologize for missing that meeting. I have good reason for missing.
Yeah, I think it was a good meeting.
I think that you had the right people in the way. Some of them are sitting here to stay for it now, so I appreciate that.
If I could describe what our family support specialists and care teams do, in two words, I would say supporters because they support our students in ways other than academics, but also connectors. They connect them to the resources that the families often need throughout the community. And it's very difficult sometimes for a family to navigate that on their own. But these three ladies have an extensive knowledge of those resources throughout the community and who they need to connect them to and what the needs are and when those connections need to be made. And I should mention too, Kathy's in her first year with us in this district. Kathy was a family support specialist at Jackson and we, we kind of stole her when there was an opening and got her to come here and she's happy, she's happy to be here because this is her community. Rachel's a Hoover High School graduate, went back to my old year, that's been 19 years before that, Hoover High School graduate. And we're excited to have her here. This is also Rachel's first year here. But Rachel was a family support specialist for two years prior to that at Marlington. And this is Jen's second year, second year with us and we're thrilled to have Jen. And Jen had a background where she worked with and interacted with a lot of those support agencies that they now connect families to. So these three ladies are so collaborative and do such a wonderful job for our students.
Thank you, my goodness. I want to know, and you have, I, I, you have, I want you to know how much appreciated you are standing before me like this and I know what you do and how dedicated you are to what you do to help our kids, our families. The grandparents thing is such a great idea too.
Oh, my gosh.
Because that's, that's more of an issue. Thank you very much.
It probably is really watching us. They think wanting to send their grandparents here, but our group wants to stay small. But we are willing to work with anyone in the family. We've talked to a lot of people about that to get this started. We do have some visual aids for you. We'll leave it up to you. For your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do love our dogs.
Great people, one guy. All right. Board policy allows individuals to speak for five minutes so long as the speech is not frivolous, repetitive, or harassing. And we have one person who wants to speak and that is Joe Kent.
I wanted to come here again and speak to you about saving portage. I know you've made up your mind regardless of what the citizens want, but you really need to give some consideration to the fact that there are many, many citizens that want this building to be saved and you are here to represent the citizens. We are aware there's going to be another school levy on the ballot in November. And you need to keep in mind, there have been many people that have said they will never vote for another school issue if portage is, is the match. If this issue is voted down, then what? Keep coming at the taxpayer until you wear them down? When I was out canvassing for signatures on the petition, which was curtailed by my bad hip, I went to one house and the individual that answered the door said, "I fully support what you are doing and agreed that portage should not be torn down, but my spouse is on the school board, so I cannot sign your petition." So there's evidently someone among you that may be open to discussing the matter. Portage is such an important part of North Canton history and there's very little of that left. Once old structures are destroyed, there's no getting them back or replacing them. In addition, portage sits so close to both Port Street and Rim Street that saving the building would not eliminate much land at all from the current project. If the annex was torn down, you would still have an access drive off of portage and there could still be a small parking area behind for the library. This would be a great service to the community and show good faith in protecting one of North Canton's historic structures. Good faith goes a long way towards public trust and public relations, particularly since there were so many that I spoke to, including young people, that said they had no idea you were planning on tearing down portage or any other building when they voted for the levy. Transparency seems to be an issue. We're not asking for the school district to keep and maintain the building, sell it, and let someone else protect it and care for it. There are many ways this building could be a valuable asset to the citizens of North Canton and we want to know what we, you want us to do to facilitate that. I'm going to leave you with a quote from Lord Acton. "Power tends to corrupt and absolute power corrupts absolutely."
Thank you, Mrs. Kent. Okay. Minutes need to be approved.
So moved. Second.
Rockwell. Ms. Rora.
Yes.
Sardko.
Yes.
Or Roden.
Yes.
I have two items this evening. First, it's recommended that the treasurer's financial reports for January 2023 be approved as submitted. And also it's recommended that following appropriation adjustments to the annual appropriation measure for the 2223 school year be approved as listed.
So moved. Second.